Okay, it is 2:01 in the afternoon. We will reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. At this time Commissioner Brunz is on an excused absence. Not sure whether he'll join us yet this afternoon again or not, but in the room is Commissioner Wiems, Commissioner Ruler, Commissioner Hughley, and myself, Commissioner Woodruff. We have Deputy County Clerk Melissa Wilson. We have County Assessor Julie Stinger. And we have Henry Voight and Charity Farley in the room with us as well. So we have an appointment. And Michael Cook is in the room with us as well. Thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Michael.
Hi, Mike.
I will read into the record this protest and some information, and then we'll go for you for some information, Michael. So this is protest number 256, Mr. Michael J. Cook, 1906 West Eugene Avenue here in North Platte. Property identification is 54707.4 Cosmichack's first replat of Banks subdivision of south half of 81320, lot 21. You are in lot 1, it says here. Mr. Cook is protesting the valuation which total land and buildings is $374,274. He is requesting that, not the buildings being lowered, but he is requesting that the land be lowered to $34,563 for a total reduction of down to $326,262. His reasons for requesting the valuation, I will let him touch on that. There was not an appointment with the referee. And Mr. Cook, I will give you some time to state your position, and then we will allow the assessor in that office to state their position as well. So I'm going to allow, we've been allowing 15 minutes, so I'll start right now. So please state your reasons for this protest, sir.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The reason I'm protesting is that following a review of my property and the adjacent properties, I find that my four acres is actually being assessed at a higher number than the five-acre adjacent properties to mine in the extent of one, and I, this was on the supplement that I provided, the one property, mine is assessed at 18.6% higher per acre. The next one, I'm assessed at 11.0% higher. And on the third one, I'm assessed at 25% higher. I've also included a fourth one on there, which is not an adjacent by property line, but is across the street from me on Eugene. And I'm assessed at 81.3% higher than that one per acre. What I'm asking is that I was hoping, and the reason I didn't ask for a hearing with the referee, I assumed that in reviewing of the calculations, that the assessor's office would realize that I'm being assessed for the same type of property. All the properties are lot-based tiered AC. They're in neighborhood 32-CO-1, and basically they're all in agriculture transitioning to residential property. So it's comparable eggs to eggs or baskets to baskets, if you will. And the thing that I'd like to do, and what I was hoping, was that the assessor's office would realize that this was a clerical error. It's been a clerical error for, since 2020, 2020, in that none of the properties have had a change in their valuation per acreage since that time. I also don't understand why, when, like I said, mine is four acres, there's, two of them are five acres, and one of them is 5.48 acres. It doesn't, there's no equality to the assessment here. And it leaves me kind of wondering what's going on. I asked for a correction on that, and if that's the correction that the board wants to go with, then my, the assessed valuation should be reduced from the 55,500 to 47,000. That would be, what I did was I took those three, not the outlier, but the three, and I took the average of them, and that would bring me right in at 11,750 for my property versus the others per acre, which I felt was reasonable to do that. I also have 1.75 acres that is in a, is tillage crop of alfalfa, which is harvested three times a year. And because of that, the agriculture, the USDA says that it does qualify as a farm. And as such, the acreage under cultivation could be assessed at only 75% of the assessed value, the true assessed value, which is where I came up with the figure of 34,563. The reason that I put the other, that last one on there, the acreage, and I do have a clerical error on there, I put 67,500. It's actually assessed at 76,500. And I did my figures based on that. Acreage there, if it was assessed at the same rate as mine, they would be 10,200 per acre for the 10 acres. But if you do the calculations, you find out that they are granted 75% reduction because they do harvest alfalfa on their property. But they are still in the same zone as I am. So I'm just simply asking that, you know, that the board see the equalization of my property versus the adjacent property. So, and that's basically my contention for doing what I'm, asking what I'm doing.
Okay, sounds good. Let me, let me ask the assessor's office some questions. Now, Julie, Henry, whichever one of you wishes to respond is fine, but the four acres with 1.75 of those acres being harvested for alfalfa, tell me how your calculations were made on that, would you?
We're using that tiered acre.
Okay, could you explain?
We're talking about the subject property.
Again, the subject property, the tiered acres. So what do we got? Let me see. So the first acre is priced, yeah, at 45,000. The next three acres are at 10,005. So somebody that would have five acres, it's going to show less per acre because they're getting that less amount as you get bigger, if you can.
Well, let's, let's use an example. Let's take the 5.5 acre plot.
Which one was the 5.5?
Which one?
If you didn't catch the parcel number.
5.48, I'm sorry.
Do you have a parcel number for that, Joe?
I've got one right here. It's 54707.44. Very, very well documented, Michael. You do a great job of your, with your information.
That's for a 5.48 acre piece.
And as you'll see, I don't know if you guys can read it up there, it's as big as we can get it, but that first acre is going to be valued at $45,000 an acre.
Okay, the first, this is what we're talking about in the tier.
No, I understand.
The first acre is how much? 45,000.
And then each acre thereafter up to 10 will be 3,500 an acre.
3,500 an acre for, now, we've got, we've got 1.75 that's in alfalfa.
Well, let's look.
That's not what, we're, we're just taking the whole.
No, I understand.
Okay, taking the whole thing, okay.
So let's do the math and see if our two numbers are correct. Would you pull up what you have? Do you have a lot number on that, Charity, that had the 5.48?
5. Yeah, that's what we have.
Yeah, they gave it to him, or he gave it.
Yeah, so 4.48 of that will be at 3,500 an acre.
I understand.
So if you take the 60,680 and divide that by 4.48.
Five.
Or 5.48, yeah. That'll give you the per acre.
And I was just assuming that that's what he did.
And then if you take the 55.5 for his and divide that by four acres, you're going to come up with higher value.
Higher per acre value.
Per acre value.
Well, I get that. I'm just trying to figure out if it was as much as we were talking about, because those are substantial, the numbers, when you, I don't know. I guess I can do the math.
Well, you said for each additional acre, those extra four, or excuse me, three.
For his, yes.
I'm sorry, I do, okay. I was.
That's not.
Oh, no, this is, yeah.
So that gets us to 55.5.
Yeah.
Now, tell me about the 1.75 acres in alfalfa. Does that make any difference?
We don't have it as an ag land.
We don't have it, no, we don't have it as an ag land.
This is a residential, rural residential lot.
Okay, Michael.
I asked him, best you.
Yep, correct.
Michael has included a document here, FSA-156EZ.
Just leave the number, I can't talk.
Does that, does that qualify, that as ag land?
It's a document I haven't seen, but no. We would not do a four acre tract within.
But I believe that's a Department of Agricultural.
Yeah.
USDA. But not for taxable purposes, the Department of Revenue.
The primary use of the property is rural residential site. You know, the ag, the minimal ag use there would be incidental.
So even the people across the road with the 10 acres, they don't qualify as ag either?
No.
Then why is theirs at a reduced rate for mine?
They have more acres.
More acres.
The first acre, the first acre is 45,000.
I understand.
And then each acre, each acre up to 10 is only like 3,500.
The next nine acres would be 3,500. And then if they had over 10, it's going to be.
Even less.
Maybe 1,500 or 3,000, I'm not sure in this area. I don't have my land book in front of me, but after 10, then those acres would be 1,500. So somebody with 15 acres is going to show substantially less per acre than even the 10 acre person probably would.
I'm trying to get that to make sure that we're on the same page here.
And those, those guidelines are set by state statute to, for those?
No, that's, that's the land model that we developed to value our lots this year.
Can I ask something, a question here?
Yes.
Now, all four of the lots adjacent to mine are in the same category as mine, as residential land usage ultimately. They're all ag one right now, which is a transition from agriculture to residential. So what you're telling me is because I have less property, I get taxed at a higher rate than they do, even though we're all classified as residential.
Why didn't buy?
Usually that's just.
This makes no sense to me, especially when you consider that the one across the road from me has a house and four outbuildings, no, three, I'm sorry, three outbuildings. And the one back behind me only has two outbuildings and no residential. The one on the west side of me has no buildings, and the one on the east side has a house and an outbuilding. So just like I do.
Okay, let, let me make sure I've got something straight here, sir. The five acres that you first listed here is valued at three, almost $3,000 more than your four acres. That accounts for that extra acre they've got.
Right.
The, the next one down is at 62.5. That's $7,000 more evaluation total on the land. So it looks like yours is lower than those two.
So what he's saying is on a per acre basis, it's not looking like that. So what we call that as appraisers is called the law of diminishing returns. And I'll read it right from the internet. It says, "As the size of land goes up, the value per acre actually goes down, a phenomenon known in the economic world as the law of diminishing returns. It's sort of the land equivalent to buying in bulk at the store. A larger item typically costs less per unit than the same item in a smaller size." So the higher, the bigger the lot goes, the smaller the per acre value is going to be. Your value's still going to be higher, it's just going to look like it's less per acre.
Per acre.
But that's because of that tiered acre situation where that first acre, now if you had one acre, it's going to be $45,000 for that one acre.
No matter what.
No matter what.
Instead of the, instead of the 10,874 or the 13,750, as our gentleman stated here, so that's what I wanted to get at. And if you, and if you had 20 acres at that, then obviously it might go down to 8,500 an acre or whatever it is.
Right.
But, and we, and we, and we do that equally throughout the county with all properties in the same class, okay?
Right. Yeah, it's because those additional acres are at a lower rate than that first acre is.
The property directly west of you that you was talking about, that got highlighted and right up there, it is vacant. It is getting, the vacancy adjustments, getting 50% adjustment for vacancy because.
No buildings on.
Done on the.
Even though it's used as a commercial property.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole other matter.
There's no utilities or anything there.
I got an idea, go buy that around.
I should have bought it when it came up for sale. I wish I had. You have no idea how much I wish I had.
I'm sure you would, because I've driven by there, and I would, I would echo your sentiment. But, Michael, and the buildings, we're not, we're not talking about.
No, I understand.
This is just the land.
Right, right. I'm not, I'm not contesting the, the value of the improvements.
But you had mentioned those other properties around you, had buildings on them.
Because they are basically in residential status, just like I am. And I, I find it hard to believe that because I have four acres versus they have, them having five acres, that I pay at a higher rate than they do.
Per acre rate.
On the tier, yes.
That sounds completely inadequate.
Well, it, it might be, it might sound that way, but Charity just quoted what the rules are.
No, I understand.
Do you want to explain?
Okay, so what about the 1.75 acres?
On yours?
Yeah.
So we would look at that as incidental ag use. The primary use of that property is rural residential site, living, you know, you living there with your house. If you were going to sell it on the market, it's not going to sell as a viable ag property. It's going to sell as a rural residential site. Somebody's going to buy it to live there, highest and best use, like Joe said. So there, we have a lot of properties throughout the county. We have tracts even as large as 40 acres.
50.
We have it as rural res, 50, rural residential site, because it's incidental, you know, ag use. It's, yeah. So we do not have an ag land value on that 1.75.
Okay.
And then, did you want to? The one next to him, the vacant lot, it is being priced as commercial with a 50% vacancy adjustment.
So it's getting $25,000 an acre with the vacancy adjustment on that one.
And what about the one right behind me?
When you say behind you, just straight south of you?
Yes. That would be, I believe that's 4707, 44.
Isn't it across Street North?
No, it's directly behind.
Behind you.
That's by Holmes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elf's premiere property.
Yeah.
I need to get the parcel ID number here.
That one's valued at residential, just like yours. First acre's 45,000, the next 4.48 are 3,500 an acre.
Look at the notes on that.
But can we look, can I look at the picture unless I had the wrong property? It looks like too big.
We got the two warehouse.
Store reach.
Yeah.
Do you want to read the note? Can you see it, Charity? I mean, I don't.
It says, "Henry changes from commercial to residential in '21."
They're not running a business out of there anymore. At one time they were selling chemicals. And now they're not selling chemicals.
But is that, so what is it, zoned? It's zoned agricultural transition.
So what they do allow, I was wondering about the metal building.
Does that mean they have to have a residence on the property?
I don't know.
Zoning, we, I've said a lot of times, we don't look at actually what it's zoned for all the time, and we look at assessment as what it's being used for.
So how could it change to residential?
They're not selling any chemicals out of there.
It's not a commercial business anymore.
It's not a commercial business anymore.
And, you know, there's a lot of residential buildings right down, you know, houses down through these one ways that are in a commercial zone.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah.
They're basically storing their toys.
I understand.
It is what it is.
Okay, Mr. Cook, we've, we've heard your presentation, which I do appreciate. We've had some explanation of how the calculations are made by the assessor's office. We've passed our time limit, but I would give you another minute or two to bring forward to us anything other than what we've already discussed in this regard.
No, I, you know, I presented what I needed to present, and I may not agree, but that's, you know.
Any other questions from this board?
Do you understand that you're not paying more per acre? I mean.
No, I understand.
Okay.
You understand that part?
I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change number four.
Wiems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Cook, as for our conversation out in the hallway, I will keep you apprised of our, what we're doing about the property next door with the city attorney.
I wish you good luck on that.
You have, you have a lot of people in your neighborhood that feel just like you do.
Yeah, it's a shame we haven't.
Hopefully we can get it moving in a positive direction for you.
Okay, we ended up with me, are you ready, sir?
I think I am.
Okay, it was just a second to get her. Yeah, she is, she's out there.
Okay.
Yeah, she's out there.
Okay, sure.
Oh, excuse me.
We have.
Come on, come on up around here. We're a little ahead of schedule on your appointments. If you don't mind, we start a few minutes early, we will. Is that okay?
I'll probably have to get a briefing later. Yeah, right now my head's somewhere else.
Good afternoon, Patty, nice to see you.
Hi.
Okay, we have another in-person protest. What I have in front of me is a protest that we had made some initial thoughts on and discussions a few days ago, and I was made aware of the fact that you wanted to come visit with us, so we rescinded the previous action until we had the opportunity to visit with you. We want to give the property owners every opportunity that we can to hear their position and allow us to act accordingly. So I will read into the record this protest number 75, Patricia C. Harkreter, 811 South Maloney Drive, North Platte. Property identification of 87415. This is Lake Maloney Lot 86, improvements only. The property owner is protesting the value of $365,160, requesting a valuation of $300,000 instead. The reason for the protest, I have here in writing, I live in a bay with no new big homes. My lease fee has gone from 50 a year to 1,555 this year. Okay, so what I wish to do here is that the, there was no appointment with the referee. I see that the county assessor's recommendation is changing the bill, year of the bill of the House to 1946, no other changes. So they're recommending a drop to 361,928. I have some information here from the landowner, property owner, not the landowner, but the building owner, and I have some pictures. Patricia, what I am going to do is I will allow, we're allowing 15 minutes for these personal protests, so I will start with 15 minutes. You'll have to, you can present us your information, and then I'll ask the assessors to respond, okay?
Okay, I don't think I'll need 15 minutes.
Well, that's fine with me if you don't, and I'm going to make that available.
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here, and if they hadn't raised the taxes so much, you wouldn't have probably 425 protests to listen to. I don't envy you at all. Oh, my gosh. So I guess a couple things about where I live at the lake. In fact, I don't even tell people, I don't want to tell people anymore that I live at Lake Maloney because they think I'm rich. I mean, really, so then I'll crack it up with, if I have to tell them, I say, well, I'm not, I'm not one of the rich ones, okay? In fact, I live on social security. I have no pension from my husband or me or anyone, so it's, so when my taxes come due, I am, I go take out a loan, you know, so twice a year, I pay it every six months, take out a loan, I get the one loan paid before the other one has to take out, because I just don't, I don't have that kind of money. I do get some homestead, which is a whole nother thing, but then usually I don't get what I'm eligible for because my leased land is still valuable. I'm like, wait a minute, so. And I was told by a county employee that the reason. I was like, wait a minute, so. And I was told by a county employee that the reason our taxes went up so high out there is because of all the big homes going up. And so I live in an area that does not have one of these big homes. If they've got that much money to build a million dollar home, I think they should get taxed highly. And not us people that live in the bay trying to live a simple life because, like I said, no big homes around me. And people don't know that when I say, well.
Now, look at me, mine's not big. I live right across the bay from, I got a little one too, right?
I know. You're not supposed to tell them you live in my bay. And you've got a smaller place than me, you know, so anyway. And then for all the last few years, I've tried to find out how much NPPD pays that taxes because we're getting taxed more where our lease is going up, our taxes are going up. When we bought our place in, what was it, nineteen eighty-seven or something, many years, yeah, we bought it in nineteen eighty-seven, the lease fee was twenty-five dollars. And I looked up and found out that I just, we just missed it by a year because the year before they decided there wasn't going to be like a grandfather, you know, for ninety-nine years at twenty-five dollars. So then it went from twenty-five to fifty, and then from fifty, it went to five hundred that were paying NPPD. And then that lasted a while, and then from five hundred, they decided, oh, we're going to up it a hundred in what, seventeen, hundred and seventeen dollars, I think, a year. So now I'm up to one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for my lease fee, and I don't even own the land. And I just, you know, and then I found out that, can't remember how I found out. I said, I've been told NPPD does not pay taxes because in lieu of, and nobody could ever tell me, in lieu of, what do you mean? What are they getting, you know? Well, it sounded like that. This is what I heard, that when they built the dam, they were on the twenty-five year lease, ninety-nine year, whatever, so they don't have to pay any taxes. So I don't think that is fair, you know, that we're paying all these taxes to NPPD, plus our, you know, property is going up high, so. Let's see if I have anything else I want to say. I think that's almost it though. Have you all heard that about the in lieu of?
Yeah, we have, we have some entities that they, in lieu of tax, they send money in, in lieu of tax.
But what are they paying in lieu of taxes? Just because they're on this ninety-nine year lease that they pay twenty-five dollars? I heard that's.
Well, essentially the.
I don't know, but I mean, I think they're getting off the hook pretty good.
The way I understand that statute, it's an entity that can totally ignore us. In other words, not pay us anything, but they choose to pay a fee in lieu of, and I think that's where the phrase comes from. But I, but I think that. And I don't know this specifically. We'd have to consult our attorney, county attorney, but I think essentially what that means, Patty, is they, they actually have the out to not pay anything. But they've elected to pay us a fee or a tax, if you want to call it, but they want to split the difference and not call it a tax because they don't want to, they don't want to go down that road and say, yeah, we're committed to a tax. Is the way I understand it, but we have that with other entities that, that were awarded that status of we, that's, we can't, we don't have any authority over that at all. Zero.
I can't tell you how much Nebraska Public Power does pay in lieu. We get that amount from the treasurer every year, so when we run tax statements, the C T L and certify it, that amount is turned in. I do believe, if I remember right, you know, they, they don't pay a huge amount because the, whatever the amount was set for back in the fifties, I think.
Fifties or forties.
They haven't changed it, but they do collect one hundred twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-seven cents to be the exact penny of what we collected from NPPD last year.
That value is not set here. It's set in Lincoln.
How much did you get from NPPD last year?
They get a.
Is that part of the centrally assessed thing?
There's a fixed portion.
That's a different thing altogether.
Yeah. The state gets some, the school gets some, and I think it's based on some gross revenue because I have a column here that says gross revenue, five percent of sales. The treasurer fills this information in or gives this information to me for me to put these values in when I run my C T L. Where is she? It's that? I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And Julie, what all is, when you're talking about that in lieu of, what, what is that one twenty covered? What is that in lieu of? Is that around the lake? Is that all of their property? Is that gentlemen, for example, which we know is not, would not be the case when you look at in lieu of?
You know, that's, that's a question I.
Because gentleman is huge when you talk about revenue. So if that includes gentleman, then we need to have a discussion. Now, if that's something different, you know, I get it. If we're just talking about property at the lake, that's, that's, that's probably more in line with the figure that you just quoted.
Yeah, Gerald Gentleman isn't Lincoln County, but I cannot tell you if that is in this, if this is just like, I just know that this is Nebraska Public Power District that I get an in lieu amount that I, that I put in there. And you asked me what that total was for last year for twenty twenty-two.
That they did pay?
Yeah, that was the in lieu amount.
Because, you know, here we've got the light room.
Oh, yeah.
I got a lot of stuff, see?
It's not really all in lieu of.
Because I, honestly, I can't tell you.
Okay, a question for you, Ashley. You had facilitated three, four thousand dollar reduction in the assessment. And your notes here has changed the year billed on the house to nineteen forty-six. Tell us how you came up with that reduction for.
So in her protest, she said that Charity and I talked it over and were, unfortunately, it's not in here. Charity and I talked it over and decided just to go ahead and change it. I, we really didn't have any, let's see, who, but Charity and I discussed it and just decided to go ahead and change that year billed.
And that helped lower?
A little bit, not a lot, but a little.
Okay. Patricia, anything else you want to add?
Just one more thing. I said, the increase, which you probably know, was seventy-three, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars for this year. That's the increase on my leased land.
The leasehold interest? The leasehold interest went up significantly.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, and again, I say, you know, tax the people that have all the money, you know, quit taxing us.
And that was based on a percentage to get equalized, or how did that work, Julie?
That was based on, you know, Charity did her sales study of the ratio. We keep track of all sales out there and we were really low on that. I have this thing at the lake here. We were, we were at seventy-six point six four percent and we're supposed to be, you know, ninety-two to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So she had to redo all the leasehold interest values out there at the lake. We had just fairly recently done a review. What, did you do the review, the improvements this year as well?
Yes.
Yeah, to try to, you know, be sure we're accurate on our improvement values so we can keep that leasehold as low as we can. But unfortunately, just the sales are, everybody knows what the sales are doing. They're crazy. And to get to, you know, then, or we need to be those leases.
Okay, thank you. Patty, just in case you didn't know, the, the value that the assessor had on earlier for those properties out there, I think, was seventy-six percent. Were supposed to be valued at a hundred percent, so that's why that went up so much. We actually, the assessor's office, trying to keep things, I think, you know, reasonable and fair for the taxpayer, just fell without a, out of range with the state would allow and therefore that jumped in the state, so. Okay, are there?
Well, I just think.
Charity, I think that Alex could maybe explain the in lieu thing a little better.
I would like to see the state be a little more generous like Colorado is, you know, if you're over sixty-five, lived in your house for ten years, you get a really good deal.
Patty, so are you?
I'm not moving to Colorado, thank you.
Are you getting a hundred percent homestead exemption out there, but it's just not enough base because of the leasehold? Is that it?
Yeah, what? I didn't hear you, Joe.
I'm hoping you're getting the homestead exemption for the age, but is it just not enough to, I mean, I don't know how they base that when it comes to leasehold interest. I don't know that. I know how, like in town, if you're a hundred percent homestead, you get that amount if you qualify, but you don't get a hundred percent out there for your.
There is a cap, yeah. There's a maximum value.
Oh, is that based on square footage or something?
Based on the value. So she may qualify for a hundred percent based on her income, but even in prior years, the value of her home has been high enough where it's either kicked her out or that hundred percent. There's a formula, so it says a hundred percent, but the value of her home allows her only maybe get twenty percent.
Oh, I see.
She did get a little bit last year.
She got a hundred percent of what the state allows last year.
But that only amounted to?
Fifty, almost fifty-five thousand, so.
Was exempt from taxation. She still had to pay taxes on two hundred thirty-six thousand.
Are you kidding me? Oh, my goodness gracious, excuse me for saying that.
But, yeah, so that, that's unfortunate with that maximum value and that's another thing that's, you know, state statute.
Well, I was with a try, so I hope I didn't waste your time, but.
No, 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 no.
Never, never a wasted time.
It was good to visit with you. So I will, anything else you want to add?
No, I'm done.
Any other questions from this board? Okay.
Am I set to go?
Um, Alex is in a meeting, so she couldn't come down, but she told me just a little bit. She did say that she sets the levies for the in lieu of taxes stuff. I don't know where she gets the levies from. I guess I didn't ask her that, but she said whatever they send her from NPPD, Dawson, and she said, there's one other entity.
McCook.
Yeah, McCook.
In Central.
And.
There's four of them.
There's four of them. And anyway, she said, they just send her whatever they want to send. She has no idea where they get the numbers from, but they even break it down for her and say, this much goes to Brady, this much goes to Maxwell, you know, so on and so forth. So she honestly has no idea where they come up with their numbers. It'd be probably interesting to find out, but.
I may work on that next.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what she told me.
Okay, great, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charity.
My, my motion is I move to accept the rec, it's not right either. Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
You bet. After testimony and evidence, evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation number seven. So the land is at zero, obviously. Improvements have been reduced to three hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Number seven is my motion.
Second.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughling?
Aye.
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 That would be an interesting, I'd like to check up a little bit on that homestead exemption thing. Gosh, that's a huge difference.
Yeah, that's. It really is, especially where you don't own the land under it. So it's not like it's portable.
He's going to come see me on Thursday, tomorrow.
Okay.
So if we want to.
Yep, you want to take it back.
I'm sorry, Joe, but when you tell me that the lease, you only pay fifteen, and I'm saying only, you only pay fifteen hundred dollars a year to lease the land? I have family members who live in Kia Estates who pay four hundred to five hundred dollars a month for their lease and they don't ever own that land either. And you guys have a beautiful view of the lake and access.
I think it started when I was one of the old timers that used to pay.
Protest number two eight four.
Well, that is on a ninety-nine year at a fixed amount.
You want it back?
I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it. So when we went from our old place, ninety-nine year at a fixed amount over to there, we lost that.
I see, I see. I didn't realize the ninety-nine year thing.
Oh, yes. So almost everybody has lost that. Chicken.
I don't want to be responsible for that.
No, I don't blame you. Are we ready for the next one?
Yes.
Two shakes, please, thank you.
Two eighty-four protest. Property ID is three eight nine eight five point zero zero. Linda K. Bach described as Block One, Lot Six, Lincoln County, District Three, Southfield, Seventh Edition, six dash one. Apparently this is, the physical address is eleven oh eight McDonald Road, North Platt. Protested land value, or the land value currently is eighteen thousand, eight thirty-three. That is not being protested. They penciled that in at the same value, eighteen eight three three. The buildings currently are a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four sixty-eight, and the aggregate is two hundred, one thousand, three oh one. That is where the reduction is being requested, specifically on the buildings, down to one sixty-one, six four three, for a total of land and buildings, one hundred eighty thousand, four seventy-six. Ms. Bach, state's lacking updates. Bathroom has original gold tub, shower sink, foundation issues, cracks in the ceiling and walls, cracks, patio driveway, and brick and the old carpet. There was no referee requested. She did present a number of photos of the interior conditions, some cracking on walls, and then exterior wise on some of the approaches to the home, patio, walkways and so forth, and then some tuck pointing that's, and some settling on the brick. All, all, all led to the evidence presented by the petitioner. Charity looked at this one and she determined in her assessment that she recommends no change because the house is dated but well-maintained, assessed as above normal condition despite a few condition issues. Sales in this neighborhood support the value, which if I, my rough math was about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a square foot, I think, for this per, it was a fifteen hundred, fifteen, what it was, a fifteen hundred and fifty-one square foot home. And Ms. Bach mentioned, I believe in her narrative, that she thought two hundred, one thousand, three oh one, it wouldn't sell for that. She bought it four years ago for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and at that time it was assessed at a hundred and seventy-three, five and change. And so she is contending that it shouldn't increase by twenty-seven, eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and one dollars in three years. At any rate, she listed the same things that were put on the front page as far as the cracks in the brick and the outdated decorum and so forth inside. And the exterior cracks and interior cracks on the wall. At any rate, Charity recommends the land be left at eighteen thousand, eight thirty-three. Improvements as well stay at a hundred and eighty-two, four sixty-eight for a total of two hundred, one, three oh one, as is today. So I would have to, have that would be a number four because there was evidence provided, but the assessor doesn't believe and I, and I see no reason to challenge that fact that it doesn't warrant a change at this time, so that's a number four.
I'll second that.
Hughling?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, you want to read into the record? Mr. Brunson did refer it at the time.
Oh, yes, at two forty-seven. We have a time delay, but two forty-seven time right now, Mr. Brunson has rejoined us. Hope you're quite my way of well.
I have, I have protest number two eighty-six, Janet L. Heinzel, P I. number zero zero two four four nine five point zero. Asking the land and improvements be reduced from two hundred and forty-one thousand, a hundred and eighty-two dollars to two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. She detached information that, she listed some properties, I think, that maybe she's thinking that comparables, they're, they're actually, in my opinion, on a comparables, one's nine sixteen and nine eighteen North Walnut. And that's in a totally, totally different part of town, different kind of structure, but I do note that she did include some properties there. Talks about, one thing that I do want to note though in her comments, almost eighty-one and have only used homestead exemption program for the few years. It's on our list that I go back about two or three years is all. This large jump in valuation will probably take me out of homestead program. Senior deserves a break. So to the assessor's point, they're probably going to receive a percentage or, which I would assume they would because this is certainly less than, than Mrs. Harkreter was, and she received a percentage. So noting that, I would move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time as the evidence presented does not warrant a change. Now it would leave the land at twenty-two thousand, forty-six dollars. The improvement's at two hundred nineteen, one thirty-six for a total of two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second. Aye.
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 I have protest three ninety-one for.
I have protest three ninety-one for Dove Haluska. Property zero four seven six six zero point zero zero, Westfield Fifth Edition, twelve one. Protested valuation, two hundred and eleven thousand twenty-one dollars requesting a lower valuation. Land is sixteen seven thirteen, buildings for two seventeen, two seventeen. A hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a total of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two. This was reviewed by Charity. Her assessment is no change. Property was purchased in twenty eighteen for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Nebraska law requires that residential properties are assessed at one hundred percent of market value. My recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's. I'm sorry, that is not correct. So, no change. I'm gonna go with number four. That's the second time I've done that. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on protest number fifty-seven, Aheem Boo. This is, uh, hotel property on nine twenty North Jeffers. Property ID is one three seven zero. It is Old Town, one, two, and three, fifty-three, and two tracks parallel to Lot One. It's the Circle C Corporation Hotel on North Jeffers that we are reviewing. They are protesting the value of eight hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars requesting four hundred and fifty thousand. Loss in business can afford high tax rate. If this city still thinks this motel is worth eight hundred and seventy thousand, then maybe this, he can buy it.
Just, just so you know, it's only at six hundred and seventy-two thousand, not eight seventy-five. That's the previous value, I think.
Yeah.
Cause they protested last year. It was eight sixty-five, six twenty. Last year, we reduced it to six seventy-two, two forty.
Oh, so he doesn't, he has the valuation from two years ago, not a year ago. Okay, so enter that into the record. Thank you, Charity. Okay, um, Charity did review this and did develop an income approach to the value for twenty twenty-three. Mr. Boo did have an appointment with the, uh, uh, referee. And the referee did, uh, concur with Charity initially, but, uh, there was a change from the standpoint of, uh, this income approach that Charity had developed. So, this has been lowered. This isn't a clerical error, right? No, this is lowered due to evidence. So, this will be, uh, number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. The sec- the assessor's recommendation based on that income approach is land at seventy-three thousand five hundred four dollars. Improvements at four hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total of five hundred ten thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Number seven.
It might be better as a number ten since it did go. Possibly?
Yeah, uh, yes, the referee did see it.
Right.
Yes, okay, I think you're probably right, uh.
What, what was the referee's recommendation?
The referee did not have the income approach information that Charity developed after this was went to the referee.
So, what happened was this was one that she had the very first appointments, that her days of her appointments, well, she took that home with her. And it was the original. And so, Melissa was not able to put her stuff in there and give me, cause that stuff was provided at the referee here. The income stuff. So, I wasn't actually able to do the income until we got it back yesterday when she was here. So, her recommendation is based off of, not mine, obviously. So, I did that stuff yesterday.
So, I think.
So, hers was based off what?
Hers was just based off her own opinion.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, so this, what I read into the record is based off of what the assessor's office did based on the income approach. So, I, you tell me, Julie, which one you think is most appropriate?
Ten.
I still think it's ten, cause she presented evidence to the referee as well that you're going with the.
Assessor's recommendation. Okay, so, my motion will be after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee. I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, number ten.
Second.
Aye. Brunson.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
And jury, that took it down from the existing, from what to what?
Six seventy-two, two forty-six, down to five ten, two ninety-two.
And we took it down last year to what, what amount?
Uh, last year was eight sixty-five. We took it down to six seventy-two.
And then this year, this, okay, thank you. And ju- you, for my knowledge, Charity, on, when you work up an income approach on something like this, do you just use a different cap rate to come with what you need to because of, you know, the location and kind of the, it's not like a, you know, a Holiday Inn or something? Is that kind of what you do?
We use the same cap rate for any and all hotels. We look at their actual income.
But we don't have that, I thought. I thought you developed it.
Through the referee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Thank you. I thought you developed it. Oh, thank you. Sorry. My bad. Now, I'm cooking. I couldn't, I wasn't tracking that. I'm sorry.
Good question. Yeah.
We're good.
Oh, did we vote?
Yes.
I didn't know we voted.
No, we did.
Yep, okay.
Could I vote?
We voted.
Apparently, you and I didn't.
Wees.
She said we did.
Yeah, cause we went through the vote and then.
Protest number, I thought he asked it before we voted.
Mine came out like a croak, so maybe you did it real quick.
Late in the day. Protest two eighty-nine. The name of the protester is L E V L L C. The ID of the property is eight eight five six zero. This is going to be a, um, Millisle Vote Club, uh, leaseholder improvement. Uh, ba ba. The, uh, protested value of the buildings, because the land is of course zero, is two hundred thirty thousand three seventy-one. The entity is, uh, requesting a value of two hundred thousand and nine hundred seventy-one dollars. It provided some commentary, um, I don't believe the evaluation is in uniform proportionate to equalize other similar properties. Goes on further to say that, um, they think a ten percent would be in line, improve, increase to, uh, equalize the property's value. And it's, and then it has a spreadsheet. Also has a couple of pictures of the exterior, which quite frankly, the exterior doesn't look that dilapidated by any stretch. But, uh, I will make, make reference to the spreadsheet for a couple of reasons. First of all, Henry reviewed this and said evidence provided does not warrant a change. And, and Henry's not here, so I guess we won't necessarily get into the weeds on this. But as I see the spreadsheet, I'm not sure that I would have seen a pattern of this, this disproportionate value either. And obviously, uh, given him the benefit of the doubt, Henry made the same conclusion. So, uh, my motion would be to, uh, say no change. And, uh, the evidence presented doesn't warrant a change. So, that's a four, number four. Second.
And you know, just a comment, in the past, we've been dead on as far as uniformity in, uh, Millisle. I used to live there for a lot of years and they've, I mean, they were really consistent, what they would did with those. So, Henry.
What Al's kind of arguing, and he says there's a court case, and he didn't leave that with us. But I guess it was, there's market value equalization, and then he's arguing, um, equalization, right? Market versus equalization. And what he's saying is since the one property only went up ten percent, everything should only go up ten percent. Instead of looking at the market, we're using market value. So, they go up different percents, which I think you can see on his stuff.
Yeah, well, that's, like I said, Henry pre-step in that, like, the spreadsheet really doesn't, to me, doesn't lend credibility.
I mean, there's a pretty good, uh, range, is what I thought, what he gave us. It shows a pretty good range out.
But are they all within that area?
All within Millisle.
All within Millisle, the ones he had.
On his spreadsheet.
Would you like to see it?
Well, yeah, because those are relatively the same year deal. We haven't had that problem in the past, I didn't think.
You know, you locked, you looked at the spreadsheet, right?
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was pretty good, right? I mean, you got one that's really high, one that's kind of low, but you're gonna get that.
Yeah, but when you look the price per square foot, that's what brings it back into, everybody's two thirty-four, two thirty-seven, two eighteen, two thirty-seven, two thirty-six. Our price per square foot's pretty doggone equal.
That's my point, I.
That's my point.
Yeah, I don't see.
But he's looking at percentage increase, and of course.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, cause the lowest one, I would think was a ten percent.
And he was wanting us just to do ten percent.
But that's, that's contrary to bringing everything in line with the consistent value.
Yeah, and that's what he's saying in that court case.
Yeah.
But that premise is contrary to bringing everything in line to it.
So, what, what that court case is, the way he explained it, we didn't obviously read it, but the way he's explaining it is he goes, your duty as an assessor is to either market value, and then if you're not at market value, then equalization secondary.
Yeah.
And so, obviously, by that spreadsheet, it looks like we're already equalized in that regard. Um, plus, we showed him sales, which he even had sales available that he had taken copies of. And there's three sales out there within that, the last couple of years.
I'm confident that your methodology is, is accurate and it's also consistent, so I'm very comfortable that if we, if we have, uh, you know, if we're out of line, we'll get, we'll find out. And I don't think we will. I think we're right where we need to be, quite honestly. You, okay. Anyway, I have, I. So, Henry, I, I, my motion was to accept your recommendation, so. And I don't know if you second it or not.
Second.
Brunson.
Aye.
Keeling.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four five three. This is from Walter Allison. Uh, property ID is nine one five point zero zero. Real property description is original town, Lot Three, Block Forty-One. The protested valuation for twenty twenty-three has landed fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Improvements at seventy-one thousand two hundred and four dollars for a total valuation of eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Requested valuation, uh, brings the total value down to seventy-five thousand even. The reasons for the requested valuation change, the owner thinks that it's too high at twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, haven't done any improvements. Twenty percent would be at one thousand three hundred, I, or I believe. He says it's over thirty percent. Um, there were no, nothing else provided. They did not request to, uh, see a referee. Looks like Charity worked on this. Uh, she makes a recommendation of no change, no evidence presented to warrant a change. Looking at everything, I would agree with that. Uh, my motion would be number two. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant the change.
Second.
Ewing. Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye. Brunson.
Protest two eighty-seven, Luanne Rockford, trustee. Property number zero zero five five one six four point seven three. It's Meadowview Lane subdivision. Let me get this wrong. I think it's.
Lot fifteen.
Lot fifteen, is it, is it one point one four acres?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, they're asking that the land and improvements be reduced from three hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and four dollars to three hundred and thirteen four eighty-two. Comments, the, I think it says sixteen percent increase seems excessive. It would be my motion to, um, accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no indicate, no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change, number two.
Second.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye. Brunson.
Protest one four seven for Peggy Anderjaska at eighteen oh two Cedar Berry Road, zero zero three five five three five point zero zero. Rolling Meadows Estate, ten eighty-one. Assessed value, a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and forty-two. Requested valuation, ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seven. Reason is, please see attached pil- pictures. Outbuilding is removed, front porch poor shape, back patio is brick, not concrete. She did attach many pictures. It was reviewed by Charity. She lowered the condition to normal due to no interior updates. See notes dated six twenty-seven. Shed has been removed, rear patio is brick, not concrete, no updates in kitchen or bathroom. Change condition to normal, did not reprice using new cost tables, and it raised the value. Just deducted the difference, the value changes in Vanguard when changing the condition from the overridden value. Also deducted the value of the shed that has gone from the overridden value. So, that lowers the assessment, uh, land at fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty. Lowers the improvements to eighty thousand nine eighteen for a total of ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. My recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye. Brunson.
Aye.
Aye.
Protest number one three seven, Mr. Rodney Limkey. Two zero eight two five South Brady, Moorfield Road, Brady, Nebraska. The property ID is six six seven one zero. The property description is part of the east half, east half lying east of County Road Number Twenty of four dash eleven dash twenty-seven. This comprises eight point seven two acres. They are protesting a total valuation of five hundred ten thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars requesting four hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. This was reviewed by, um, Henry and, uh, the, uh, he, he responded to the reason for the request is that the basement of fifteen hundred sixty square foot is not completely finished. There is only twelve hundred and sixty square feet that is finished. And Henry made that adjustment for him, reviewing that information, changing that living area in the basement to the twelve hundred and sixty square foot. So, what that did is it brought down, not the land, but the buildings was reduced, uh, a, a bit. So, my motion is going to be, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. Land will be, stay at thirty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Building, four hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars for a total of four thousand ninety, four hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. Number seven is my motion.
Second. They should be happy with that one.
Yes, they are.
Where they wanted to be. Second.
Wees.
Aye. Brunson. Ewing.
Wulver.
Aye.
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 I believe this is protest three hundred. We'll find out in a minute. Parcel number is five, four, eight, two, zero. Joni D. McClure, and it's described as Lincoln Highway, third edition, east half of twenty-two, approximately one point one, zero acres.
What number did you say that was?
Well, it said, it's either three hundred or three twenty, but it's.
It's not three hundred.
Okay, so try three twenty on for size.
Three twenty.
Five, four, eight, two, zero is the ID number.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's three twenty?
Yes.
Okay. I won't, I won't touch that.
Actually, it's only three, ten.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, who's the comedian? Been picking on Joe for being a comedian. Okay. Back to business, folks. The protested value is a hundred and forty-five thousand and twenty-one dollars with no differentiation between land and buildings. They requested reduction to a hundred and ten thousand, one hundred dollars. And comment is, we're not on city sewer water, the basement not finished, missing a ceiling tile, missing ceiling tile, not a ceiling tile, missing ceiling tile, concrete floor, missing some lights, roof needs replaced. They did provide some evidence in the form of some very good pictures, pictures of the basement and some leaking issues, and not an expert on mold, but might be some mold issues there because of the leaking. Foundation wise, they've got some close-ups of what might be the, one other source of seepage into the basement where they've got foundations, cracks, where someone has mitigated in the past with tarring and so forth. So Henry looked this over, and he spoke to the taxpayer, and he reviewed those pictures in another conversation I had with, with these folks, with this lady. And he recommends that we change the condition to below normal, which I would note is two steps below where it was previously graded or ranked, I'm gonna use the word ranked. So he would leave the land at twenty-four thousand, four, thirty-five, but reduce the buildings to ninety-five, six, fifty-five, for a total of a hundred and twenty thousand, ninety dollars, one hundred and twenty thousand and ninety dollars. So to me, that's the number seven, because we've had some evidence presented and the assessor recommended this reduction, so it's a number seven.
Second.
Rens.
Aye.
Keelin.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Wayne.
Aye.
Yeah.
I have protest number four, five, zero. This is from a Nicole Fisher. Property ID is two, four, seven, one, five, point zero, zero. The real property description is Lavelle Home Site sixty-three. The protested valuation for twenty twenty-three was land at ten thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars, improvements at eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for total valuation of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. They're requesting a total valuation of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Reason for the requested valuation change, they don't believe that they would be able to sell the property for what it's valued at, the house needs a lot of work, windows are terrible, needs new flooring throughout. They did supply a lot of really good photographs, particularly of the garage, and it looks like Henry reviewed this with the taxpayer, and after reviewing the taxpayer information, changed the condition on the house to normal and the condition on the detached garage to poor. They changed the recommendation. Their new recommendation from the assessor's office is land staying the same at ten thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars, improvements dropping down to eighty-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars for total valuation of ninety-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Number eight, it would be my motion that after inspection and review of the assessor, I move to lower the value due to the condition of the property to the numbers that I read in as recommended from the assessor's office.
Oh, second, but didn't we see this yesterday, the day before? And that house looks familiar even with the tree there. Obviously, I'm not right, but wow. Okay.
Didn't have it marked off anywhere. Keelin.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Protest number two hundred and eighty-eight, Alan and Vicky Fugate, property number zero, zero, four, seven, one, two, zero, point zero, lot ten, block five, Westfield Edition, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. They are not protesting the land value of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, but they are asking that the buildings be reduced from two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars to a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. Total land improvements from two hundred and thirty, two thirty-one to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Exhibit A, exhibit A is. Some written documentary about drywall and the ceilings falling off and kitchen cabinets he'd replaced, et cetera, and he also documented that with an estimated cost of repair and photos of those areas. Want to note that in twenty eighteen, they protested a value of two twenty-one, seven, twenty, no, two forty-five, one hundred, and the board reduced it to one ninety-eight, four seventy-five. We gave a 25% functional depreciation for multiple condition issues, and that remains on here today, that 25% reduction already.
From when?
From twenty eighteen. I also want to note that in twenty twenty-two, it was a 4% trended increase, and this year a 16% trended increase that they all got. So that's where most of that, those increases came. It would be my motion that number four, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time, as the evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Rens.
Aye.
Keelin.
Protest two hundred, Larry Hahn, fifteenth, fifteen, West B, ID zero, zero, one, two, zero, zero, five, point zero, zero. Property protested is five, eighteen, North Miles, Cody Edition, all of one and east half of two, forty-one TP. Protested valuation, ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five. Requested valuation, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty. There is a junkyard next door. This can't help but hurt property values. This wouldn't be tolerated in a wealthy part of town. He did include pictures, not of his own property, but of the property next door and empathy for people that live next door to places like this.
What is the name of the protester?
Larry Hahn.
Because the same person that lived next door, no, it's not, it's Dave, but that's the same pictures from another protester.
That I did.
Oh, it is the same pictures, isn't it?
Well, I mean, it might not be the same ones, but it's the same building.
Same building, yes. So this was reviewed by Ashley, and no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All of the south side properties received a one point one-sixth adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. That leaves the land at eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three, improvements at eighty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two, for a total of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. My recommendation, number four, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time, evidence presented does not warrant a change.
The assessor.
The assessor. I'm just having all kinds of trouble today. If you would have brought a bottle to add to that, I would have been on board.
Second. Second. Aye.
Wheeler. Or Wayne. Wayne. Rens.
Aye.
Keelin.
Aye.
Wheeler. Aye.
Okay. Protest four, forty-three, Scott Rayburn, nine, thirteen, West Philip, here in North Platte, property ID is four, one, three, eight, five. This is Sun Valley Edition, fifteen, eight TP. They are protesting the overall valuation of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, requesting a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three seventy-five. Several photos are attached, leaking roof, siding is in tough shape, and there is evidently some problem with some of the gutters as far as leaking and not installed properly. Looks like Charity had reviewed this and agreed with the property owner, stating that the siding is deteriorating and needs replaced, gutters were not installed properly and leak, original windows are slightly weathered, some holes in paneling on the interior, changed the condition to normal. So this would have been a property you looked at the inside or just looked at their both? Oh, their photos, okay, thank you. So this did not receive, did not go before the referee, so they're gonna be quite pleased with you, Charity, because you had reduced the property value on this building per those problems with exterior and some on the interior. My motion will be number seven, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which would be land at sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, improvements a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars for a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Number seven.
Second.
Side note on that property, it did sell for one sixty, one hundred and sixty-five thousand and seventy-one.
Okay, about right on then.
Aye.
Rens.
Aye.
Keelin.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Aye.
Wow.
Protest three, four, zero.
That looks like.
Parcel ID is three, nine, zero. Sound right? I didn't look at the real estate card to confirm that. Yes, three, nine, zero. Okay, this is petitioner's Catherine J. Rosas. Property's footer described as old township, I think that's old township, original town, excuse me, original town, sixty point eight, three feet, lot eight, in block twenty-four. Physical address, I believe, is one twenty-one, East Eleventh Street. Land value currently is thirteen, five, fifty-one. There was no request for reduction to that price or that value. The buildings are currently at fifty-nine, eight, thirty-seven. Was a request to reduce that to fifty-five thousand. Current value of the aggregate, seventy-three, three, eighty-eight, and of course, with the reduction request on the, on the building, the aggregate request reduction to sixty, would be sixty-eight thousand, five, fifty-one. The applicant says, your records say my property has central air, and it does not. He also has the square footage wrong and even have a note to correct it, and it has not been corrected. Foundation has cracks in it, and so it gets water in the basement when it rains hard. I have attachment from info, which she did, some very detailed pictures and evident water issues in the basement, and I can probably ascertain additional challenges because it is a partial basement from the pictures I'm seeing into a crawl space, and that's always a recipe for problems. Ashley, you looked at this, did you, did you go onsite or did you just look at the pictures and discuss this with the applicant?
Yeah, I talked to her and I looked at the pictures.
Okay, very good. The only reason I asked that was because to clarify which, which motion applies. I actually got recommendations here to leave the land at thirteen thousand, five, fifty-one, but she did acknowledge that the square footage should be adjusted to nine hundred and twenty-six, which wasn't done during review, but they were going to do so. And she also removed the central air and added the 10% functional depreciation for the foundation and basement issues, which are, to me, quite evident in the pictures. So she would leave the land at thirteen, five, fifty-one, the improvements would be reduced to fifty-two thousand, four ninety-six for a total value of sixty-six thousand, forty-seven. So based on the evidence and the recommendation of the assessor, this is a number seven.
Second.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four, four, six. This is from a Rose M. Roth. Property ID number is three, five, nine, three, zero, point zero, zero. The real property description is Runstrom's Subdivision, west eighty feet of the east hundred and sixty feet of the south, one hundred and twenty-six feet, lot two. Or block two parcel, I don't know what that two means, but number two. It looks like it's six point two, three acres. So it's lot, lot two of block six, point two, three acres. Okay. It's all run together, so it's hard to decipher here.
I wish the little were written down.
Well.
That's two.
Yeah. The protested valuation for 2023 has land at seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, improvements at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for a total valuation of a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and four dollars. The requested valuation drops everything down for a total valuation of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, fifty-eight dollars. Reasons for requested valuation change are, the property valuation, the reasons for the valuation change are the windows are old and in bad shape, needs replaced, must be covered in the winter, window trim paint on bare wood, and bare wood in places, need wrapped and sealed. Number three, the paint, the patio out back, the concrete is broken and heaves up in the winter, needs replaced or removed. Shed out back, siding is bad, is in bad shape, needs replaced. I've tried to make improvements over the last ten years to bring the property up to the neighborhood standard to be comparable, but there is still all a ways to go. Envelope with pictures included for items one, two, three, and four. Signed, Ms. Roth. She did supply those photos. I mean, it does look like there is need of some paint touch-ups. The shed out back is in poor condition, but as Charity reviewed this and notes in her comments, the shed is only assessed at five hundred dollars, which I think is, is adequate. The assessor's office recommends no change as the house is in above normal condition as there have been some improvements to the property, and again, that shed is only assessed at five hundred dollars. Looking at the photos, the property in general, I would concur with that. It would be my, number four, my motion is to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time, the evidence presented does not warrant a change. And I would have it at, obviously, no change, so the valuation for 2023.
Second.
Keelin.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Aye.
Protest number three hundred and sixty-three, John O. Michelle O. McFarland, parcel number zero, zero, six, two, six, nine, five, point zero. It's the northeast, no, it's the north half of the southeast quarter of seventeen, fourteen, thirty, it's eighty acres. They're asking the land be reduced from eighty-eight thousand, eighty-four thousand. Their comment, I do not.
Did you mark that one already?
Well, see, I thought all of these have been done, actually, and three sixty-two is done also.
Yes. We haven't done three sixty-one for McFarland. Well, I guess that's inside now.
So those two have been done, right?
Yes.
And so let's look at some others. I think two twenty-five has been done, hasn't it? Two twenty-five, two twenty-eight, two forty-one.
Two twenty-five, yes, two twenty-eight, yes.
Two forty-one.
Yes.
And two forty-six.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, the reasoning looked familiar.
I'll give you one of mine that's, I know it's not.
Are you thinking you can put it in here?
Oh, I'm gonna put it in here, I'm sorry, jeez.
Oh, I'm gonna put it in here, I'm sorry, jeez. So let me ask on these other two, two sixty-two or three sixty-two and three sixty-three have also been done.
Yes.
Okay.
He gets to hide his own Easter eggs this year.
Been good.
Thank you for saying that and recording me.
I dropped my good ear to you guys.
I don't care who you are, that's fine.
I needed that, thank you.
He just said it to me if I'd have done that.
Yes. You want, you want me to skip you and do mine? Since you haven't had a chance to look at that one?
Okay. Protest four, four, five. Greg and Colleen Bringwatt. One, nine, one, three, one, West Suburban Road, Hershey. Zero, 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 eight, zero, five, four, two, zero, zero. Legal description, part of the southeast quarter of section nine dash fourteen dash thirty-two, twenty-three point five-three acres. Protested valuation is land nine thousand, ninety-seven thousand fifty-five dollars. Buildings a hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars with a total of two hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. They are requesting that the land be left the same, ninety-seven thousand fifty-five. Buildings be lowered to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-four. Reasons for request is no new additional buildings or improvements added. They did attach a few pictures and some verbiage to go along with the pictures. There is some water damage, some wood rot, some damage to the siding, some damage to other finishes. It was reviewed by Ashley. She did change the condition on mobile home to above normal condition on the nineteen ninety-four detached garage to normal and condition on the steel utility building to fair. It was built, the steel utility building was built out of used materials. That takes the improvements down to a hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars with the land remaining the same for a total assessed value of two hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. My recommendation is seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Runstam.
Aye.
Lillard.
Aye.
Okay, protest number two oh six. Brenda Shepherd. Twenty-eight, five, forty-five, East McClellan Road, Moorfield, Nebraska. This is property identification number six, six, four, two, five. Part of the southwest quarter, northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of five, ten, twenty-seven. Two acres. They are protesting the valuation total landed buildings of two hundred thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. They are requesting a hundred and sixty-five thousand. The reason for the protest, the steel building has a dirt floor and has leaks in the ceiling around the bottom. The barn is also having some issues with the siding and has holes in it, as the pictures do depict that are provided with this protest. Henry looked at this protest and he, he concurred after viewing the information, he changed the condition of the steel utility building to normal and applied adjustment for dirt floor, changed condition on barn to normal and applied a twenty-five percent adjustment for the dirt floor. So his, he has lowered the valuation and this would be after testimony and evidence presented, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which is the land stayed the same at twenty-eight thousand, buildings at a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Number seven is my motion.
Second.
Williams.
Aye.
Runstam.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Lillard.
Aye.
All right.
Number, let's see, protest, yeah, one thirty-nine.
Parcel is eight, seven, seven, four, zero. Would be Leonard and Jane Hassel. Described as Lake Milloney Lot number one seventy-eight, improvements only, forty-four dash A one. North Platte NP TP. The physical address apparently is four eighteen Seagull Lane. Protested value, or yeah, protested value, it's currently, of course, the land's at zero since it's a lease holder. Buildings at five hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. They're requesting a reduction to four hundred fifty-three thousand six thirty-two. And they had a number of comments. They both signed the comments of twenty-nine percent increase, hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollar property tax dollar increase in one year, question mark. So we get property tax penalized because we worked our butts off trying to make our homes look nice, question mark. We don't own the land, we pay NPP eighteen fifty for lease rights this year, which will go up to twenty-seven fifty in a few more years. The yearly cost will never go away like paid off mortgage. Bank's only loaned up money to higher than average home value due to the lease ground issue. What would a similar size house in town be worth minus the land value? What do we get? No snow removal, neighborhood does that with their own labor, sheriff takes an hour to get here. We had a break-in in ninety-five and we were home. No road improvement for the Seagull Lane. Assessment from NPBD for docked up in the nineties. We also have to repair this road. Fire station's ten miles away, over ten miles away, which increases our home's insurance rate. EMT's over ten miles away and I take medication for hereditary heart condition. The, the pictures, that's their testimony, the pictures, I believe, are county assessor picture showing the front and back of the property along with the fact it is in fact a lakefront property with a, with a small dock landing area or something. Charity looked at this. Charity, you say no change evidence presented does not warrant a change. Sales support the value. If I did the math right, that's an eighteen hundred and sixty-four square foot house was just three hundred and fourteen bucks a square foot. Does that sound right?
Charity, sorry, what?
This house.
Say yes.
Did you calculate the leasehold interest or not?
No.
Okay.
I did not. I just, I took the five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar, or five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar value. Because I got the leasehold. That's included. So yes, yes, I did.
Well, then, may I ask a question as part of this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because in my mind, that is a, that is a place that's on the lake and the other lake, she was that lot, two thirteen, two thirteen was a lakefront. I didn't want to get bays confused. And we established a leasehold interest just of the ground at that time on two thirteen of a hundred thousand. So, you know, I just wrote that down.
This whole value of three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so, well, you know, we might as well.
Are you talking about, so are you talking about the question about whether or not the house would be valued exactly the same in town as it could be?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, just trying to put it in perspective. How many?
Hundred and twenty-four dollars a square foot on our house.
On just the house.
Just the house.
Okay, so, so what are we, I'm, I'm just a house. This is on a lake lot, right, on leased property?
Yeah, right.
Okay. So, so that I don't get confused, we, when we did a lake property earlier without the house on it, remember? And we said that was a hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Because we took the detached garage off because somebody bought it.
That's right. So then that left a leasehold interest on that piece of property at a hundred thousand.
But that was also across the road. That's not.
Oh, okay, thank you so much.
No, no, that was across the road.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
But you're telling me this doesn't have eighteen hundred and sixty-four square feet?
No, it does. Eighteen hundred and sixty-four.
Okay, so, correct my math, then. What am I deduct, or what am I assuming wrong?
You were taking the eight, the five eighty-five, which has the leasehold into it also. I'm saying it's one twenty-four, hundred and twenty-four square feet just for the house. Not counting the two detached garages and the leasehold.
Is this the house value here that he needs to be looking at? Three, two, three, forty-one?
Yes.
So you're saying after you break down all the other improvements, the house itself is two hundred and thirty-two bucks a square foot?
No.
No.
Two hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-one is the house value.
So a hundred and twenty-four dollars a square foot?
Sorry, there's, right, there's authorities that have told recently.
So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around its value.
What's she add, or is, is, are we still on Hassel?
Yes, yes. It's a lakefront. It is a lakefront. I can see from the pictures that the assessor took, Henry left it, or maybe Charity did. Somebody went in and took pictures at some point.
I didn't know. That's not it.
That's not it.
I was trying to see if this, if it breaks it down, to show me the value like it does on our.
She just bought it.
Well, let's see, where did I find those numbers? I found it somewhere.
Was it the two thirty-two? What was it? Did we say the house was two thirty-two, Ashley?
Do what?
Two thirty-two, three forty-one is the house value?
I'm out of it, but yes, that sounds right.
Yeah. So this is going to be the value of the house.
Okay, so.
If you divide that by your square foot, it'd give you the hundred and twenty-four.
So your, so all these other improvements are added on in portion of that five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Because that's your basement finish. This is all the information on your house.
Mm-hmm.
So there's your wood deck and stuff, that's separate.
Right.
Sight adjustment is separate, but these are all the components that come up with the, the house value and the depreciation and stuff that you're building, all that comes into effect. Gets it down to.
So for depreciation, we're at two thirty-two actually for the house itself. Got it. Okay, that makes a little more, a lot more sense to me.
I just wear footage.
Okay.
That's where it comes in, one twenty-four.
This is time to answer the question.
And I think she's got some sales right next door.
And then twelve.
Yeah, the doctor.
So he paid four sixty-five for this house, tore it down and is building this.
Of course.
Why not?
He paid four sixty-five for the leasehold of this?
Yeah.
Plus the cost of tearing that old house down.
Right.
Unfortunately.
And the cost to build the new house.
And then the one right next door, that one, she's rehabbing, she's completely rehabbing, put a little addition on one side.
She bought it for five fifty.
And it is gutted.
Unfortunately, those decisions by our neighbors impact us on property values. Can't stop that.
It's the fair market.
The ones right next door.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification, I just.
So, so for my knowledge, what do we have for a leasehold interest on Dr. Crowell's and on Mrs. Bourne's property? What do we have listed?
Three hundred and thirty-five thousand is the leasehold.
Okay, on both of them?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much. Makes my life easy.
I'd love to have that three thirty-five on it.
Thank you very much.
The assholes that we're talking about is also three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, well, very good. I just wanted to clarify that, get my head around that. All right. So again, to recap, Charity recommended no change evidence presented does not warrant a change in sales in the neighborhood support this value as we've just discussed. So that would be a motion to approve a no change, which is a number four.
Runstam.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
And thank you, this was a great discussion as far as I'm concerned. As I learned a lot with those three properties.
I'm going to editorialize when I'm going to.
Do you have one protest since you asked?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four, five, two. This is for Walter Allison. The parcel, property ID number is nine, four, zero. Real property description is original town, six, so lot six of block four, eleven. The protested valuation has landed fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Improvements at twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars for a total valuation of forty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Requested valuation drops everything down to twenty-five thousand even. Reasons for requested valuation change are, they bought the property ten years ago, he gutted it and started rebuild. His health went south bad five years ago, hasn't done anything since. The house is empty, not collecting rent. The heat is on, the water's off. The increase is over forty percent. Twenty percent is six hundred dollars, he says. I don't know if that's accurate, but I don't think that's accurate. I'm not going to do the math right this second. Charity reviewed this. There was no, no evidence provided with his protest or in conversations with Charity. She's recommending no change. No evidence was presented to warrant a change. I will note, based off of the photos that the assessor's office had and looking at the notes that are from previous years, back in twenty-eleven, a functional depreciation of eighty-eight percent was added to better reflect the condition. It was then changed, the forced depreciation was removed. They applied a twenty-five percent functional depreciation for the rehab in progress. That still remains on here from twenty-seventeen. So would be my motion number two to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change. I have land valued at fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, buildings at twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars for a total valuation of forty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second, that sounds like a very fair amount question for anybody in the assessor's office. Since that is number one, unoccupied, number two, in the rehab condition, you know, as we had some of the others on the unoccupied fifty percent and then we had a, you know, a rehab under those. If he had presented evidence, would this have been a good candidate to fall in those, that classification? If he had the evidence to present it?
For the vacancy adjustment?
Yes.
Because I was talking about. This one, it's been in this state for a while, so probably could be.
Okay.
But since he's been in the, in the process of trying to rehab it, not a lot has changed in many, many.
He, he's not going to get that many.
And he's not going to.
Yeah.
At the time, yeah, we, we seen what he was like.
Okay.
I mean, it could be a candidate for that. What do you, that one, the problem on the side, like that. Because I think it is literally gutted.
So that's, that was my question. I just wondered if that wouldn't be more in line. But on the other hand, forty-three, if that's what you have for total value, that seems pretty reasonable to me, too.
Forty-three seems reasonable for what is there.
I agree. So, anyway, discussion, sorry.
Ewing.
Yes.
Yes.
Woodruff.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Protest number two, eleven, Christian Kevin Orr. Parcel number zero, zero, three, seven, one, zero, nine, point, two, nine. Asking total land and improvements be reduced from a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seven to a hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Please see the attached. It did show items that have to do with, I'm going to call it kind of housekeeping items. I'm going to, let's see, so I, I do want to note that we did receive the photos, received their written letter dated June twenty-sixth regarding the broken windows and cracks and different parts about both the interior and exterior of the building. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I would move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I would move to lower the valuation of the assessor's recommendation as follows, land fifteen thousand eighty dollars. Buildings a hundred and twelve thousand one fifty-nine for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. As I mentioned, they were asking them go from one thirty-eight seven oh seven, so that would be my motion number seven.
Second.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
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 Protest two oh seven, Bernice Ziegler, at twenty-eight eight one, North Highway eighty-three, North Platte, zero, zero, five, nine, four, zero, five, point, zero, zero. The northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section ten dash fourteen dash thirty, four point four seven acres. Protested valuation is nine hun, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, is that a two, two hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars, I believe. Requesting be lowered to two hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars. Bernice did attach many photos that speaks to the condition of the home, and she also attached a well-written letter. The home does have some issues with deterioration and, and updates that are needed. It was reviewed by Henry, after speaking with the taxpayer and reviewing the information, he changed the condition to below normal, that puts the land at fifty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five thousand, the buildings at two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two for a total lower evaluation of two hundred and seventy-one thousand eighty-seven dollars. My recommendation is seven, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
How much was the reduction?
It went from two hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars down to two hundred and seventy-one thousand eighty-seven dollars.
Okay. And for the record, it's Bernice, she's corrected me a number of times.
It's Bernice, oh, I always thought it was Bernice.
And I know, everybody altered that, but, and she called me on the phone, and she's saying, this is Bernice.
Bernice, okay, good to know, I, I won't make that mistake again.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fine.
Does anybody else have anything you want me to be working?
I've got one left.
I got one here, protest one sixty-five, D. Ann LaFerty, eight, eighteen thirteen North Sherman Avenue, North Platte, property ID of two, zero, six, nine, five. This is legal description, highest replat ten. They are protesting the valuation of a hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars, they're requesting a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and four dollars. Reason for the request, woodshed is gone, Charity agreed, woodshed is gone. Land, it, it didn't reduce to the level that she had requested because the woodshed is gone. So this would be number seven, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation of the assessor's recommendation, which would be, land at thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Improvements a hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for a total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and four dollars.
Because the woodshed is gone.
The woodshed's gone.
What's gone?
The woodshed.
I can't even remember, what is gone?
Has Charity gone back in?
It's getting late.
Number seven.
Seven, woodshed's gone.
And we're all done.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye, woodshed's gone.
Touch the boxes!
Couldn't get your fingers broken. Actually, I, I just want Charity in the room for mine, they want to read yours.
I can, I...
Yeah, I just really, I want to, when I go through it, because I want to, I want to know if she looked at it or not, it's going to change on my motion.
I need to rest my voice, can I have...
It's not going to probably change what I, that I, I'm going to agree with, but I just want to know if she looked at it.
And I have questions about this, and you, you did this one, so. I want to know, when do we start condemning properties?
Don't sit so close to me, she may throw something. She's on break, she's not going to answer you, okay, I'll probably just try this on my own, I can do this, it's not a big deal.
I can do one, I can.
I don't think anybody's there to run the show for us now, I started a bad trend here, sorry.
Really?
Yeah, that's what the notes say.
It says what?
Charity.
Think you have to wait your turn.
Yes, this is not correct.
Interesting.
What's the estimate?
Uh, spoke with the owner.
I can go ahead and read mine, because she's here to answer my question. Any improvements? Ready? Protest one, three, five, parcel number is two, eight, wait a minute, let me double check. Two, eight, one, two, zero. Two, eight, one, two, zero. It says two, eight, one, two, zero on the property card. So does mine, but, I mean, well, no, I don't know what it means exactly on the, on the protest, I don't know. But on the property card, it's very clear, it's an eight. Yes, thank you, two, eight, one, two, zero. Everett P. Palmer, uh, Junior, Everett P. Palmer, Junior, it's also described as McGrave's Valley. View second edition, physical address is one oh two South Elder, I believe, protesting the value, aggregate value of ninety-one thousand four hundred and eight dollars, requesting it be reduced to eighty-one thousand nine fifty-two, and again, that's an aggregate, aggregate value. The comments are, I'll try to read as much as I can through the legibility, two white house, a seventy-nine year, three by twelve roof, which I'm sure means the pitch. It leaks in the sidewall, and water leaks, forty-year-old water, needs a new roof, inside walls, something about, I can't read it, I can't read it for the record, forty-one thousand five hundred dollars, it says in seventy-nine, needs twenty-five thousand dollars to fix, I can read that. At any rate, Charity reviewed this one, and Charity, if I can refresh your memory on one oh two South Elder for Mr. Palmer, did we actually visit the site?
I did.
Okay, very good, that explains why you have such great detail in the back page.
I've been here multiple times.
Thank you, that answers...
This is, I actually got two different lessons, mobile homes, or modular, I should say, this year for protests, they actually are very much supposed to have a mobile home, you can go on the backside and conceal a door that holds the water heater, it looks just like a mobile home, but it's a modular home, does not have the undercarriage underneath it.
No frame under it? Well, I, I like your, your detail, they're very detailed, they're very informative, and so I, yeah, so obviously you took a good look at this.
Just had a lot of pour left of, who installed the windows, who installed the siding.
Right, so I'm going to read this in real quick, so Charity says, roof still leaks around the vent, the kitchen, and water damage is present on the ceiling, tiles in the kitchen, the ceiling in the living room has been repaired from some water damage, all of the siding is installed incorrectly, nailed at the top and bottom, the soffit's missing in some trim pieces, some siding trim pieces are starting to rot, windows are installed on the south end of the house were not installed correctly and unlevelled. Front picture window collects water rather than the lines, drain and drain away from the house, second attached garage, just three walls, and tied to another attached garage, completely unfinished, duct work is only in the hallway ceiling, invented through the walls into the bedrooms and living room, not a typical duct work. He was only, water heater's only accessed from the outside like a manufactured home, and we repriced it using the updated cost tables, changed the grade to a five dash five, already in normal condition, and already has a fifteen percent functional depreciation for the condition issue, so Charity says, let's leave the land at sixteen thousand nine sixty-five, but reduce the improvements to sixty-three thousand thirty-eight for these reasons read into the record, and that makes a total eighty thousand and three dollars. My motion is to approve this reduction, number eight.
I concur, and second.
Aye.
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 Charity, you have another one?
Yes.
What, do you have one, though?
I have one, right here.
Oh, okay, oh, I, yeah, that's right, you were, yeah. If you want me to go, Mr. Chairman? No, 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 no.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number three, three, three. This is from a Doug Cross, the property ID number is four, three, five, two, zero, and I'm thinking he just missed the point, zero, zero. The real property description is Town Lots Company nine, five, North Platte Town Lots Company, addition to North Platte. I can't find it, it's actually not on the property card, or if it is, I can't read it, it's so faint, so. The twenty twenty-three protested valuation has landed five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars for a total valuation of nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. The requested valuation drops everything down to ten thousand five hundred. Reasons for the requested valuation change is due to no money for repairs and updates, the house has gotten worse, foundations settling. I'm going to do my best to read due to the legibility. Siding and foundation made of lumber instead of concrete, windows and doors, and sheet rock has gotten wet from leaking roof, will need to be replaced in the kitchen and washroom. No photos or any other evidence was supplied, reading through the notes over the past several years, we've done everything we could, we've added functional depreciation, we've reduced condition down, the assessor's office is recommending no change, the house is already in poor condition and has a twenty percent functional depreciation for foundation issues. It would be my motion, reason number two, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time, no evidence was presented to warrant a change.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Protest number one thirty-two, Dana Collins, parcel number zero, 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 nine, one, zero point zero. The original town, North Platte, lot two, block forty-one. My, they're asking the total land and improvements be reduced from a hundred and twenty-two thousand one sixty-eight to seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. And so, the notes are, siding not complete, no stairs to attic, floor furnace, not four-stair heat, there are photos documenting that, this individual spoke with Charity in the assessor's office. She did take into account changing the condition to normal, and changed the detached, or attached garage to fair condition, gave an additional five percent functional depreciation for the unfinished siding, so would be my motion number seven, that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the value to the assessor's recommendation as follows, land fourteen thousand four twenty-nine, improvements eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for a total of a hundred and four thousand three thirty-seven, number seven.
Second.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wains.
Aye.
Okay, the last protest for the day. Protest number three, three, five, Michael and Lisa McClanahan, three twenty East Eleventh Street, North Platte, ID number is six, six, five. That's a fairly low number, eh? This is Old Town one thirty-five.
Original town.
You're right. One thirty-five, one. They are protesting the total valuation of a one twenty, a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars, requesting ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six, due to, she says, see attached, and the photos do show a tremendous deterioration of a lot of things about the house, the roof, the concrete steps, the siding. Actually, you concurred with this individual, from the standpoint, you suggested to change the condition on the house to below normal, which I can concur, and the condition on the detached garage to fair. And there's several things that you have included there that speak to the areas that they have shown in their photos, that show some tremendous, and justification for your changes, so my motion will be number seven, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which is, land stays at fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, the improvements have been lowered to ninety-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for a total valuation of one ten, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Did I have a mistype of the improvement, should be ninety-six thousand four sixty-seven?
You have written down, or what's typed in here is ninety-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six. So what would that be, you said it should be ninety's...
Should be ninety-six thousand four sixty-seven.
Four sixty-seven, you know, that makes the total math, the math works out better if I use that number. It does, great, thank you for that correction, but the total then is a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, correct?
Yes.
I'll let you make that change on the improvements, number seven, that's my motion.
Yeah, we can do it right here with the red pen, if you want us to. Then you'll have it done, I won't forget it.
There's, tell me again.
Ninety-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven.
Four hundred and sixty-seven, got it.
Yes.
Thank you. Number seven, my motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Fine.
Healy.
Aye. Okay.
Did you have one left? Oh, did you get, I thought you guys were out. You still got one? That goes in my...
I think they're out. You know, when this came out, the lunch, there was a silver thing on the end of this.
Like having a mousetrap go off on my finger.
You just can't have nice things at the end of the...
Okay.
Did you break it?
It is four oh eight. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Equalization.